All right, well, welcome and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Holly Township Parks and Recreation Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 9th, 2025. And I'd like to start by calling this meeting to order. And we please do our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, may you please do the roll call? James Wright?
Here.
Hutchins?
Here.
Earl? Here. Carl?
Here.
De Sessa?
Here.
Next, let's move to the approval of the agenda. So I do know, looking at this agenda, that it was revised. We had to correct some items and move them into new business. Do I hear a motion to approve our revised agenda?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Wright, moved by Hutchins, supported by Wright. All those in favor, please say, oh, excuse me. Madam Secretary, can you please call a roll? Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Earl? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Next, we have a commission and staff reports. Let's go ahead and start with our staff reports. That's okay with everyone?
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We have to approve the minutes from last month.
Okay. That's not on there? Okay. All right, so we're going to add... Thank you, sir. We did not put that on there. So these are for the minutes for...
March 12th, 2025.
March 12th, 2025. Hope everyone has had a copy of them and reviewed them. We just should have put that on the agenda, but thank you, thank you, Joe, for letting me know. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for March 12th, 2025? Are there any changes or additions that you would like to make?
I move to approve the minutes for the March 12th, 2025 meeting.
Is there a support?
Support.
Roll call, please. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Earl? Yes. Carl?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Okay, now, we'll get this right. Next, we have on the agenda is commission and staff reports. Now, I did say that the staff should do the reports first, but let's stay with the agenda and let's move first for the commission to give the report. So with that, James, can we start with you, sir, please?
Sure. Over the past month, I focused on several technology and communication upgrades to improve transparency, accessibility, and internal operations for the Holly Township Parks and Recreation. We did transition from the AT&amp;T system to the Verizon 5G service. We are still having some issues and glitches with the phone system. However, I am actively in contact with Verizon. We're working on that. I expect it to be resolved rather soon. I also, for the Microsoft Office 365 implementation, I did set up a trial version of the Microsoft G5 online service, as some of you are aware, which enables us to have access to the office programs online. Now, the G5 is a governmental program that has increased security and security issues for governmental entities. I am recommending later on in the new proposals that we transition to a G1 license. I'll explain that a little bit later. However, the trial will expire on April 19th. In that, we also set up email addresses for all the commissioners as well as staff. Again, utilizing governmental service keeps everything secure and takes into account FOIA requirements that we're supposed to follow. These upgrades support our goal of making Holly Township Parks more connected, efficient, and open to the public. And I appreciate the board's support, the commission's support, and feedback as we continue to go forward with these upgrades.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hutchins? Commissioner Hutchins?
I spent the last month on and off. I had to do some general maintenance on the John Deere loader tractor. I had changed the oil, drained the oil gas out of it, cleaned the plugs. She fired right up, surprisingly. And I've been working out here on the B area, getting some of the CISM brush-off. I got two piles out here, and I'm continuing to work with our maintenance people, removing that stuff and continue grading around. Me and Jeff Carl met with Montgomery, about Mr. Montgomery, about the drainage problem. We were out there in a torrential rain to get firsthand knowledge. We should have had life jackets on, but we got some good ideas on that. And I've been grading the road coming in and ditching, trying to relieve some of the water problems with the John Deere tractor. Here in the next week or two, I'll be taking the... Doing the maintenance on the zero-turn mower, which saves us about $400 to $500 instead of sending it to the dealer. I guess check, see if it needs an oil change, change the blades on it, which are very hard to change, and go through the whole chassis-on-chassis maintenance. So that's my next projects, amongst other small projects. But yeah, that's my report.
Very good. Carl? Commissioner Carl?
Joe did mention the fact that we met with Robert Harvey. That is Jack Montgomery's son, Robert Montgomery. And as Robert addressed last meeting, he does own a company near Philadelphia. It's major excavation. They build golf courses and roads. Robert left yesterday for the East Coast. I talked to him. He'll be back, I think, Monday or Tuesday next week. We will follow up and put together kind of his recommendations of what we can do to alleviate what we encountered with a flood.
Yes.
Was it Tuesday, Wednesday last week we met?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's terrible. So that's in the works. I'm also now switching to the beach. I want to put together a list of to-dos that I think we could get done before it opens, just minor things. Robert Montgomery and I are also considering what we can do to the shuffleboard court to either get that surface sanded or see if there's a PVC coating that can roll it out and it's got good slide capabilities. The graphics are already there. So we're looking into that, and that's it for me.
Excellent. Commissioner Earl?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, she is doing our minutes and calling her off for the first time as our secretary. So bear with us. And if you have any questions or you need me to slow down, just let me know, okay?
Thank you.
So, okay, so let me do a couple of quick reports. You know, one of the most important things that I've always felt, even in my job and work, is to understanding what the rules and regulations are for our commission. And so I spoke with an attorney from the MTA, and that's the Michigan...
Township.
Township.
Association.
There you go. Michigan Township Association. And so we are part of this township. Obviously, we are a Holly Parks and Recreation Township, and we have to follow certain rules and regulations. And so she did an amazing job and sent me everything and anything that we, as commissioners... And I have to remind myself to say that because I have a tendency of saying "board member", and we will now address, as we are, and that is commissioners, and we are a commission. And we, at our level here, as elected and some of us appointed, we are responsible for tax dollars. And so therefore, we have to follow certain rules as authorized by the state of Michigan. So all these rules and regulations have been sent to me, and I will forward them to each of you now that we have our own emails. And then you can click on the various links so that you too can see what those rules and regulations are. You'll also see other policies such as the Freedom of Information Act and things of that nature so that you can be familiar with. I don't expect you all to memorize it. That's not the purpose. That's not the intent. It's just to know. So if we have questions about how do we function? What do we do? What are we responsible for? Things of that nature, you'll have someplace to go to. And it's all electronic. And then hopefully, we'll be able to make some paper copies. Now, again, they are so long. I don't expect for each of us to have copies of that. But perhaps our staff can have them here in the office. And so if anybody wants to come and read them themselves, you know, they can do that, or they can just go online and they can see that as well. So that, again, everything is transparent and open, and we'll give everybody that information so they can see, okay? But it'll be all set. And the other thing that I've been working hard with our team here is we need some improved updates with regards to procedures for our staff. Things like how do we purchase things? What are the rules and regulations for acquiring items? Investment policies? How do we invest the dollars that we have? We need to give certain rules and regulations. Hiring? How do we hire staff? What are the things that we do in order to do that? Now, there are some policies already set, but I reviewed them, and I think they need to be updated just a little bit. And just so y'all know, I do not have the authority to make these changes just because I say so. I need to bring them back to the commission. You all take a look at them and then review them, make whatever changes, modifications, whatever you'd like to do, and see if this is something that we can do. But I definitely think we need this in order so that we can help our staff understand what we need. And I'm also hoping that sometime in the summer that we will do a strategic meeting of this group. Because I remember one of the first things that was mentioned at the beginning, I think Jeff talked about this, and that was to identify our mission statement. He mentioned that, that we need a mission statement. But with that, we also need some goals. Where are we heading? What direction do we want? Not just the staff, but the commission. We all have to have similar types of things that we're all heading in that direction. Now, you've all heard us give different reports on different items, and that's great. But at the same time, we, as a commission, need to be together and understand where we're heading and where we're going. Hopefully, we'll do one that says for five years, do a strategic plan for five years. In some of the places that I've worked for, they do 10 years. I think that's a little too far to come up with a plan, but I think five years is a little bit more realistic. And then again, remember, I use the word "plan", so that means that it can be changed. So if things happen throughout the year, we can modify our plan so that we can adjust. We'll look at this five-year plan every year, every year, to see where we go. But we'll do a status report so we'll know, how are we doing? Are we accomplishing this goal? Are we making the repairs to the beach like we said we were? Are we fixing the roads like we said we want to do? Are we doing all these other things? What are the goals that we want? And I have other goals besides operational goals that we need to do. I mean, I... Oh, my God. I'd like to see our trails improved. I'd like to see maybe having some more activities, more programs that we're going to talk about here in our parks and things of that nature. You know, we live in such a beautiful area, and this is... Sorson Park is truly one of our gems. And we need to let people know about this gem, although that might not be great. Be careful what you wish for, as they say. But certainly, if we do this correctly, we might be able to make this an even better opportunity for everyone. So... And then lastly, you know, Commissioner Hutchins and I, we're also members of the Village Parks and Recreation Commission. And so one of the things that he and I have done is we'd like to at least give a report in terms of what our commission is doing so that they can understand what they're doing, and maybe there's a way we can work together. And so two items that they mentioned to me, and I told them that I would bring back to you. One is holiday activities. That's coming up in September. So we may want to work with them to see what activities we're usually working on as it relates to holidays. So giving y'all a heads up. We're going to come up with some stuff there. And I think all she mentioned to me was, we do the stuff at the park. And I don't know what that means. So I said, okay, I will talk to our manager and see what she says. I'm sure she'll know. And then lastly, I think Donna might be happy with this because they were very excited. I mentioned it at two different places, at holidays and at holidays committee and also at the Village of Holly Commission meeting. I talked to them about the bees that we're doing. And I mentioned the educational side of it. And I'll tell you, I got such good response from it. They're all very excited and very pleased to know that we're doing this. So they see it as a plus for our community. So I want you to know that, Donna. They really, really liked it. As a matter of fact, the chamber, and I mentioned this to our manager, he would like to meet with you because I believe they're doing some sort of plant selling or transfer or something. I don't know. But they would like for you to see if you can talk to them about bees and how they pollinate these plants and their importance. So I think that would be a good time for you to, again, to get to know what they do and maybe develop another stronger relationship with them and then bring more people to see what we're doing over here. And I know they were all concerned about bees stinging. I said, no, talk to Donna. You won't get stung. But anyways, so there's a lot of things that we're working on. I'm very excited. So thank you all for joining us. And with that, I'll turn it now to our manager, interim manager.
Thank you. I wanted to echo Joe's comments because Mr. Hutchins, Commissioner Hutchins, has spent a tremendous amount of time and effort here in the last, and I won't say month, because it's been months that he's been working, not only on the tractor, which he had to rehab the whole thing, but he also has been working with our maintenance crew of Mel and Zach with taking down trees and for doing a lot of this debris work that had been left with CISM. But I want to point out to everybody that between Mel, Zach, and Joe, they have actually saved the park thousands of dollars because we had two trees that were right next to the building that Joe was not comfortable taking down. And we hired a company to take that down. And they did a great job. They went over to the beach. They also cleaned up different trees over at the beach. But these two trees and the beach work cost us $8,000. And so with all the work, and you can see around the nature center how much clearing has gone on, that they've done a tremendous job in taking care of all of that. I also wanted to mention that one of our longtime employees, Tom Martin, he is in a program along with his wife Brenda and our other staff person, Lisa, which is called Michigan Works. And it's offered through the state of Michigan. And Tom was recently told that he might have to leave our program because of the fact that he had been here so long. Their actual intention, when people come into that program, is that they learn different things and they move to different locations. And working with their staff person, Val, and her supervisor, we have been able to work out an agreement where Tom is able to stay with our program for another full year. And he is going to be helping here at the nature center, but also over at the beach. So that will give him an opportunity to learn new skills over there. And we had explained to them that with the bee program and other activities that we're going to be having outside of the nature center, that he's also going to be doing a lot more activities that will benefit him and the parks. So I wanted to point that out. We have been doing a lot of activity here in the nature center. Lisa is our resident artist. If anybody were to come in, you can see her touches in different locations around the nature center. And she's also working on a current painting that she's doing that also accents the bees program. And then Brenda, she is unfortunately going to be having surgery coming up, so she may be out of the nature center for a little while. But we appreciate all of their effort because it's time-consuming with different activities. I wanted to point out that we do have some activities that are coming up. We had disc golf tournament this past Saturday on April 5th. There will be another disc golf tournament on April 19th. They handle everything on their own. We don't have to do anything as far as their tournaments. They do all the activity and they provide us with the insurance information so that they're able to hold those. We are going to be having with collaboration between Headwaters Trails, CISM, which is the Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area through Oakland County and Holly Township Parks. There is going to be a guided walk from 6:00 to 8:30 on May 1st, and the public is welcome. And we're going to take a walk, not... There might be a small presentation here in the nature center, but then we're going to do a walk through the grounds and all the way out to the overlook, which will be really neat. On May 3rd, we are going to be having the ASP program through Oakland County. And they are going to be providing workers for us to do cleanup at the beach and also here around the nature center. And there is also going to be an Earth Day Cleanup Day in collaboration with Headwaters Trails. And that is going to be on May 3rd, and that activity is going to take place over by the Silverman property and by one of the schools that's over there. There's a park, a linear park, that was supposed to have been put in when they were doing that subdivision, and it did not get installed due to the downturn in the housing market at that time. So Headwaters Trails is heading up a process to start doing more activity in establishing, re-establishing the path that went through there to the bridge that would go over the river. And so they're looking for volunteers, and anybody is welcome to contact Headwaters Trails at their website. If you need any additional information, I'd be happy to supply that to through the parks. And then there is... Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? That volunteer day is Earth Day. That is going to be April 26th from 10 until 2. The Cleanup Day I referred to on May 3rd is actually the Holly Township Cleanup Days that are going to be going on with the township. And the only other thing I need to mention is that Mitchell's Garden Center is going to be having an Antique Plow Day. Mr. Sorensen has previously participated in that in the past. And that plow day is open to the public, and that is going to be on May 17th. And generally, it does start fairly early in the morning. I think the tractors probably start arriving like 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock. And then I think that they do the plowing up to noon, and then they break for lunch, and then they go back. Some of the tractors go back out and continue plowing. So if anybody's interested in that.
Question, the beach cleanup, it's not ASP, it's someone else, but is it still May 3rd?
It is May 3rd. ASP is the group that's doing it. But the cleanup is the thing that I got wrong. The cleanup is the Holly Township Cleanup that our own township arranged. So...
Ma'am Chair?
Yes?
I'd add just one thing coming up. We talked about plans, future plans. We have right now in place a master plan for five years, which is probably going to look... We have to find when the expiration date is.
It's the 2026.
Yeah, because we have to start working on that because the village had one. And Village Parks redid their five-year plan, their master plan, and saved between $10,000 and $15,000 by doing it themselves.
That master plan was in that packet of information that I gave out to the commissioners during that meeting that we had.
So we should be looking at that pretty soon because it takes a while. It took us a whole winter, about five months, to redo that master plan for the Village Parks. In other words, we saved a lot of money. Everybody took a certain thing, and most of that's boilerplate. So all we have to do is just come up with, you know, new population numbers, things like that, and then delete what we didn't get done or don't want to do and add things that we want to look at. So master plans, professionally done, are very expensive, like everything else. We know what we want. We just got to do it. We got to do it in time. Why you have a master plan is so you can apply for grants like from the DNR and stuff. And we didn't have a master plan for years because we didn't participate with DNR after we built this place. So we didn't have a master plan. Now we have one, so we got to update that. And if we do it in a time... I say that a year out from the expiration date, we should start looking at redoing it.
Which is now.
Yeah. Yeah, which is now.
We have nothing to do. Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I'll just add a little bit. I mean, I've done so many master plans. But at the same time, while I'm glad that we're going to, you know, maybe take a look at helping us save some dollars, please know that it's not just a matter of putting information and statistics down. We also need maps. We need photos. We need all kinds of things like that that may require some professional assistance. And so maybe we can balance it out so that it doesn't cost us a lot. But I can assure you, when we go out competing for grants and things of that nature, when we show them our master plan, you know, it needs to be as best as it can be and not just a bunch of numbers, things of that nature. I promise, okay? But we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out when we get to it. You know, there was one thing that I missed as I started this meeting. Again, I apologize to everyone. There's so many things that I yet to learn. So can I just step back just a little and ask, just for a point of privilege here, and ask the commission to please just take a few seconds of silence, just a few moments of silence, and the people out there as well? Those of you who may or may not know, but this is to honor Debbie Bigger. She was the clerk and treasurer, I believe, for the Village of Holly for many, many years. Do you know how many approximately?
I don't.
I don't either, but she was there for quite a while. And she did a great job for us. And just if I can just ask for a few second moments of silence in her memory? Thank you. Just a few seconds. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Next, we have item number seven now, which is the public comment. And this is related to this agenda items only. So there are any members of the public that wish to address the commission once recognized by the chairperson for items listed on this agenda only. Comments are limited to four minutes, and the commission may extend this time for up to an additional four minutes by majority vote. Prior to addressing the commission, members of the public must state their name and address for the record. So are there... Is there anyone from the public that wishes to come and speak? And they can address us using this mic? And they can address us using this mic? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and move on. So moving on to item number eight, we have a presentation. Amy Childers will be giving us the presentation from, or for the MSU Extension for H. Amy, thank you and welcome.
Hi, thank you all very much. I didn't put together a PowerPoint presentation. I thought that if we would just have, you know, kind of a question and answer session. I did bring a packet of information about extension that I'm going to give to Mary, and I've got my business cards in there, so if anybody wants them, they can have them. So, yeah, thank you for having me. My name is Amy Childers, and I know most of you either from my prior role here as a garden coordinator. I know somebody socially, I've met a couple of you briefly, but happy to be here. And in my new role in extension, I'm program coordinator for Genesee County. And because Genesee County is so close to Holly, I've been given permission to work with the nature center. First and foremost, I'm here to advocate for the project. And I worked closely with Joe and Donna to try to get that going. We've worked with her many years, coached my kids in Little League, and Donna, I've met here at the park, and was very excited to welcome them and their beekeeping associations, been using this for this meeting, and I'm happy to have them here. So, so yeah, so our work at extension basically is the research and resources of Michigan State University brought to the rest of the public. So we, we do all sorts of things, business administration, environmental work, obviously agriculture, because MSU was founded as an ag school. And my programs are 4H, so that is the youth development program of MSU Extension. So we work with youth from five to 19 years old, and basically they can have a club or project in any sort of interest that you can think of. Obviously agriculture would be what most people think of when they think of 4H, but we have programs for, and honestly, anything that you can think of. So, so yeah, so does anyone have any specific questions for me, or how extension might be able to help Sorensen Park?
Are there any questions?
I would like to point out, this past week, I actually met with Amy and her coworker, Lauren. As a volunteer, you have to go through a pretty rigorous process in getting approved to work with 4H and MSU Extension. And the one thing that they impressed on me is that they would really like to use our park as kind of a hub for activities that they would love to have happen, which I think would be wonderful because it will actually give a lot of presence outside of this area.
Right.
That we wouldn't have otherwise. And we can also benefit from the fact that they have a wider economic base that they can draw from, but they also have a wider social media and all of that, that, you know, when they have activities that even they plan, that they can put that out of their resources. And I think that will be real valuable.
Right, so I work for the county, but we have statewide reach. And the extension system actually expands. Every state in the Union has a Langrate University that has an extension program. So it's, there's even some international reach as well. So 4H, I mean, from the way I heard of it, it's a nationally recognized symbol. And if someone decides to become a club, then they can fundraise with the 4H emblem, and they get, like I said, all of our resources and research. So there's lots of, you know, and if I don't know, if anyone wants to reach out to me and I don't have an answer, then someone else does. We have a nice network of experts that can help you with pretty much anything that you might be curious about, so, yeah.
Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Growing up, I was involved in 4H in Waylake Township. And they had a winter doings, that's when you did all your inside stuff. And then the summertime, you had your Oakland County 4H fair, animals, vegetables, anything you grew. And back in the 60s, I had a winter project in baking, and I won, I had oatmeal, hickory nut oatmeal cookies.
I know, I still want the recipe for your hickory nut oatmeal cookie.
And I won, I won blue ribbon and county honors on. And that was back in 1960, not 1860. But 4H was a great thing to have. And I was also, in the late 60s, I was a 4H leader.
Nice.
So.
I'd be happy to have you back, Joe.
Yeah, I'm going to look into it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, so again, I'm just, I'm happy to offer, you know, my services in any ways that I can.
Thank you.
And I'd love for the programs here to continue to flourish and grow. And then taking off my 4H hat for a moment and just being Amy again, I'm happy to bring you back to the park, something that you guys would be interested in doing. So, so yeah, so I'm, I'm here to help, you know, just as a neighbor and citizen, and I care a lot about this place. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I look forward to hearing more about this, and I think you, you got the information that we are interested in, especially with 4H. Joe's going to bake cookies. So hey, I don't know what the, well, he's done just about everything, so I'm not surprised with the cooking.
I made some dandelion wine once.
Of course, good.
Okay, really good. All right, bring us back and look forward to working with you further, okay? Thank you, Amy. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to old business. So the first item on our agenda is to consider approval of the Northwest Oakland Beekeepers Association 2025 contract with Holly Township Parks and Recreation. So Commissioners, I'm sure you've all had a chance to read this. I just have one comment, but I will wait, I will wait to hear from you all first. Is there anything that you, that you see that you have a question with? Anyone? I have one minor question, one minor, just clarification. I won't, I will call it that. So the last sentence, where it says, "Contact will currently be between the president of, of NOBA Donna Bouchelle and Holly Township's and Recreation Interim Manager Mary Blanchard." Okay. So I, I, I see the word "contact." Does that mean that it's just, excuse me, it's just the contact between the two of you? Or is this? Can you explain what you mean by this sentence?
Yep, it's just that instead of approaching the full board, that we felt it was easier for her and I to communicate, and if there was anything that we needed further to address, then we could bring it back to the board. That doesn't mean that any future decisions would be handled just between the two of us. It just means that the day-to-day type operations, even setting up the VDR and that type thing, she can come to me and ask me questions. If I don't have an answer, I can reach out to the commission and see how we feel about it. But it was more just a way to address the fact that a general communication between the two of us.
I see, okay. So my, when I read this, I thought that, and I'm, I'm reading this again, I guess I misread where I saw "contact," I thought maybe it should be "contract." But it's, it's just the "contact." So it's the operational contact between, will be between the two of you, which I don't think many of us have an issue with that. But if there are any changes to this agreement, then they come back to us.
Perhaps maybe what I could do is take out "contact" and put in "communication."
Perhaps, that would help me just a little bit, just for clarification purposes.
All right.
And I appreciate it. Thank you. That's my only question that I had on there, just for clarification purposes. I think it's a good thing to have, this way that we know. By the way, thank you, thank you, Donna, for listening to, to the commission, and we appreciate all the hard work that you did for putting this, this together, and also for our manager and, and someone else, I won't mention his name. Commissioner Hutchins to help as well, to keep it clean and simple. I think that's his words to me, Jane, keep it clean and simple, you know? And none of this wherefore, whereforth, whethi, whatever. Keep it direct. And I'll try, I'll try. But I do appreciate y'all doing that and, and addressing the concerns that we had. So, thank you very much. Are there any other questions or clarification to do? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to consider approval of the Northwest Oakland Beekeepers Association 2025 contract with Holly Township Parks and Recreation? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Hutchins. Is there a support?
My support.
Support by Carl? I hear a roll call, Madam Secretary?
Roll call, DeSessa?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Earl? Yes? Hutchins?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Very good, motion passed, so congratulations. We're anxious to work with you. My first contra- congratulations. Thank you. Moving right along to under old business, item number two, consider approval of proposed changes to Holly Township Parks and Recreation staff hours and wages. So I will, I will take charge or respond to this one here. I, as we mentioned at our last meeting, I worked very closely with our staff to dealing with staff hours and, and pay. And I want y'all to know that I did a lot of research in this area. Come to find out later that much of my research had already been done by previous, previous commissions, so, but I'm glad I can confirm. For one thing, one of the hardest things I had to do was to compare similar type positions throughout various villages and cities. And I found some similarities, but yet I never found a complete apples-to-apples type of thing. We, we have unique staff. Our staff is very much hands-on, and, and they do just about everything. Whereas in other communities and organizations, they have a ton of staff. And we're just, we're just, I'm going to use this word, but we are blessed to have a good staff that's willing to take on some, some activities that perhaps may not always be on the job description. But, but they do manage to work it out, and, and they do it well. Now even the pay, when I looked at the pay, they are definitely not in line with what the market is out there. Again, comparing apples-to-apples, our budget is a lot smaller than some of the bigger communities, and that's something that maybe we may have to address. Not maybe, but we will have to address in the future, let me say that now. Because I think we're, I think this organization's, has a potential of growing. And if we continue doing more projects, if you can, providing more services and things of that nature, I think Commissioner Hutchins, and I think this is something that he said to me, you know, we may need some additional dollars. And, but we'll see. First, we want to see what we can do, prove to our public that we are doing our job, and that we've, we've looked under every rock and stone and utilized our funds properly. But in the meantime, in the meantime, I also worked with, with our accountant, and, and I checked to see if this is doable within our budget. And so my recommendations, after doing a lot of research on the various, various communities as it relates to positions, and they had all kinds of names, all different types, but for the most part, a person doing this, say, on a full-time basis, the annual salaries, just a start, would range anywhere from the lowest I found between $70,000 to, again, depending on the size, to over $100,000. Of course, ours is, it's part-time. We're looking to change our classification to, to salaried instead of hourly. Again, we will work on those. And I know that our interim manager, I'm hoping that in the very near future, at some of our special meetings, we can remove that title of interim and, and make it permanent. But for now, just for now, because this was the directive that we, that I received from the commission, was to take a look at the, at the, at the salary and to look at the hours. And so I've written this memo so many different times, so different times, and I finally said, just stick to what they're asking, keep it simple, as Mr. Hutchins would say, and just stick to what the commission asked. But I did add a couple of things anyway, as they say. So I ask the commission to, as it relates to the interim Parks and Recreation Manager, which is still a part-time position, as I said, reclassify this position from part-time, hourly, non-exempt, to part-time salary, non-exempt. Now, the reason it's going to stay non-exempt is because she may work overtime, or she may, and again, under, under, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, she may qualify for overtime pay and compensatory pay as well. Compensatory pay, there you go. And so again, this is something that we have to work, work with. But salary at least increases her hours, and I'm looking to, as I said, change the reclassification, number one, to do that. And then, and then number two, increase the weekly week hours from 13 to 30 work hours. And again, for her to stay part-time, she must not work more than 30 hours. And if she does, for whatever reason, she's going to have to look at her schedule a little closer so that if there's a time when she has a late night meeting, that she may come in late or something like that. We're going to have to work this out, Mary, because I know you're a workaholic, and we need to, we need to do something with, we do not want to be in violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and we're trying very hard. We thank the world of you, Mary. We, we definitely approve everything. We, we appreciate everything you do. But at the same time, we must, we must follow the law, and we, we must respect your time as well. And so for now, for what we can afford, I'm also recommending that she increase her work hours. And again, she works right now 13 per week, we all know she works more than that, to at least 30. And, and again, she will work with us on her schedule so that no more than 30 hours. And then increase her hourly pay rate from $13 to $18. Again, this is for a part-time person. Again, if you were to see the, the costs and the salaries of individuals at this level, they are much higher. But I think this is at the lower level, so it's starting, and this is something that, again, I'm going to recommend that we take a look at once a year to see what we can do to address this, all right? And this is just the beginning. We have to look at other things. But for now, I'm just looking at, as I said, it sounds like a broken record here, just looking at the hours and the salary, okay? And then next, for our part-time worker, now this position is responsible for supervising all our maintenance workers. Now, we don't have a ton of workers, but we do have a ton of volunteers sometimes, and they do work with him, and he, he's responsible for at least managing them and helping, and so is our, our manager as well. She does some of this as well. But, but for the most part, he handles the maintenance portion of, of this position. So again, so that we can better reflect the duties that he has right now, it is recommended that the job title of this position be changed to Park Maintenance Supervisor, Part-Time, okay? Now with, with him, I am not changing his, his classification. He's going to stay as a part-time, hourly, non-exempt employee. Yeah, even though he has supervisory experience or requirements, I may, we may have to change this and make, make it to the salary. But for now, since he's still hourly, I'm going to, I think it's okay like that. I need to, I need to a little bit more work on that. I've checked with some folks, and I think it'll be okay. But at least his job title will be, will correct, and, and he'll be given a few more hours to work with. Now, again, his work hours, usually, my understanding is that he works eight hours a week. That is his time. He comes in eight hours a week for the norm. However, in order to help us save some dollars, we may also be asking to do maybe some of our lawn mowing on, on some of the areas, and maybe a couple of other things that, that we're hoping that he'll help us with to maintain, better maintain our, our parks and things of that nature. So I'm, I'm increasing, I'm asking the commission to consider increasing the work, the weekly work hours from eight to up to 20 work hours, especially during the spring and summer season, when there'll be more, more time to do some of these things. And then in the winter, when there is not a lot to do, for whatever reason, ha, ha, he can go back to, to eight hours. But this is something that we're going to have to watch and evaluate as, as we progress, okay? Okay? And then also for him, I am recommending the hourly pay rate from thirteen dollars to fifteen dollars. And even with these positions, I know some of you may think that this may be, maybe not a little high, or maybe not high enough, but this will allow us to, to stay within our budget and to be able to, to maintain these fees, so we can do this. The other reason I'm starting them at the, at the lower level is, even though both of these individuals have incredible experience and incredible dedication to their work, if I were to look at a full-time position for something like this, these positions also have things like certain certifications, park certifications, certain mechanical, whatever, certifications, and ours do not. When we need someone like that, like a plumber, electrician, or something like that, then we hire a certified licensed plumber and things of that nature. But if it's something minor, that does not require that, then perhaps he may or may, may not be able to do this, but we'll, we'll see. But again, my recommendation is to increase the hourly rate for our park maintenance person from thirteen to fifteen dollars. So, if you continue reading my memorandum, as, as I've mentioned, it's important that we do our best to be competitive, to try to bring in the best people that we can, to make sure that, that they are able to retain a, that we are able to retain a skilled professional to do the work that we need, so that's so important. And I'm sincerely hoping that the commission would consider these recommendations and increase them as I've recommended. Now, lastly, I attached also for, for your review and consideration, and I'd like for us to take a look at this in the future. And again, these are job descriptions that I've put together. I've followed the same format that was done in the past, but I think it needs a little, little more tweaking. So, for those of you that have a lot of experience working on developing job descriptions, please take a look at them. I'd also like our staff to, to evaluate them as well. I know I've had one concern about, how do I know all federal and state regulations? We all need to follow federal and state regulations. Again, we may not have them by memory, but these are things that we will learn. And again, please take a look at these, and I'm hoping that our, at our next meetings, we can consider approving these job descriptions. And we need to take a look at our personal policy manual, again, to see where we can make some updates on that, as it relates to sick time, vacation time, things of that nature. And again, part-time employees usually don't get a lot of these things. However, I've noticed that in the past, they have offered some of these benefits to perhaps the manager, and so we will, we will work with that. And again, this is not for me to decide, this is something that we all need to decide and take a look at. So let's start slowly. Let's look at this. We'll look at the, the, our, again, our policies for the future, and see where maybe we may need to update them or change them or whatever, and, and we'll go. So for now, I'm simply just looking and making the recommendations as they relate to, to our salary and work hours for staff park. And of course, I did make some minor changes as it relates to their classifications in order for us to be able to do this under the Fair Labor Standards Act. And the only other thing I'm recommending that's, that's not inclusive on salary and staff and work hours for staff is the, is the job title for our maintenance person. I don't really think he has a job title. I could be wrong. I looked for a, a, a job description for him, for anyone, whoever was our, and I could not find one. So, again, I used my experience to come up with a, a job description, and, and those are the two that you have before you, and we will review them some more, and, and I will meet with staff to make sure they, they comply and that they do the things that I've said on the job description, or maybe even add. And, and that's it for now. So again, is there a motion to approve the recommendations as identified in this memo dated April 4th, 2025? That's the best motion that I can come up with. Do I hear someone to make that motion, please? Or are there any questions? Let me, let me start with that. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
You know, I, I read Park Maintenance Worker, and on the back of that, we call him Supervisor. I'm just wondering, should we start with a manager for this position as a title?
Well, not really. If you read the job description, this, this, well, I, I'm calling him a supervisor, but this person reports to the manager. This person will report to the manager. And again, this is so that we can, again, let, keep legislation away from operations. So this individual is not a manager, this person is the supervisor, in that he or she will supervise the maintenance people only. However, the manager, our interim manager, is his immediate supervisor. And so, that is why I didn't make him a manager. Any other questions? And again, this person reports and should report to, to the manager. What are your thoughts on that? Any comment? Concerned? Nothing? Okay. All right. Okay, so I'm not asking, the, with, I'm not asking for, for job description approval. I'm only asking for, to reclassify the interim Parks and Recreation Manager, who's also part-time, and make her from hourly, part-time, hourly, non-exempt, to part-time salary, non-exempt. That's one. And then second, to increase the weekly work hours from thirteen to thirty hours, and then increase the hourly, hourly rate from thirteen to eighteen hours. Again, this is to try to pay her fairly and at a, at a better level. And then for the Park Maintenance Worker, who's also part-time, I'm not changing his reclassification. He will continue to be a part-time, hourly, non-exempt employee. Again, the manager's gonna be responsible for making sure that he sticks with the hours that we've authorized. That'll be her responsibility. But however, during the spring and summer season, I'm asking that we increase his ability to, to work a little bit longer and change that from eight up to twenty hours. And, and again, this is during the spring and summer seasons. This way, we can afford to do this, and I'm giving him a little bit of a pay raise. Again, when I looked at the starting pay for a laborer, it, you don't wanna know. It is, it is very, very high. And again, I think Mel has done a wonderful job for us, and he's very cooperative. I know that I asked our manager to check with him to see what he felt about the title at least, and, because he has no title right now, and he has no job description right now. But, but at least, we're gonna give him a title, and then we will work on his, his job description later to make sure that it meets any, any needs that we need, and plus, any concerns or any changes that the, that the commission would like as well for the future. And I'm recommending that his hourly rate go from thirteen to fifteen dollars. So it's a, it's a two-dollar increase in his, in his case. And again, yes, sir.
And pending approval by this commission, this becomes effective?
Yes, sir. Well, at the next, excellent question, yes. As recommended, it goes into effect right now, and at the next pay period, this salary increase will, will be, will be shown. I did speak with our, with our accountant. I've gotta get, I've got to, again, work with staff to come up with some better ways, make sure we have good titles, good contracts, things of that nature. I'd like to take a look at our audit, things of that nature. Not, not to, to do the audit, but to see how we're doing it, and to see, make sure that we get a good, good price for it. And again, I do not have the final say, I never will. I need to bring everything back to the, to the commission, and then you decide. And then little by little, as we began developing our operations manual and things of that nature, the manager will, will do that for us. And I'll be working with her, because as, as Commissioner Hutchins has said over and over and over, we need to separate the two. And, and right now, we are just simply working to correct any, any, any functions or things of that nature, and to help her too. This is a lot of work. It, it, it's not simple to do a job description. It takes a lot, it takes a lot of time, and, and you do studies and things of that nature. But, but again, I have some good experience, and I did my best, and we'll look at it some more. So the job descriptions are not final, so look at them again, all right? And I'll work with staff one more time, and to see if it's, if it's, if it's okay. Because when I put these together, I took bits and pieces that I knew that they did and, and meshed them together, and followed, again, the format that we currently have for our job descriptions. One of the things that I've always, I've always hesitated and have a hard time is when we deal with the ADA requirements of a job description, you must tell this individual what the physical requirements of this position are, so that they know what's, what's part of that. So Mary cannot lift anything that's more than, I believe, twenty pounds. She has to be able to, to, to talk. I know this sounds crazy, but under the American Disabilities Act, those are some of the things that you, you must outline in your job description. I'm not too keen with the way we've done it in the past, so maybe we'll modify that a little bit more and look at some other job descriptions, and, and we'll, we'll move from there. But I wanted at least to start you all off with something, something that you can take a look at and something that we can, we can review as we move right along. Because we are going to do this together, kicking and screaming, but we will get operations in order, and we will be able to direct and manage our staff once we set our, our policies and rules, and then we will no longer have to be involved in the day-to-day operations because we, we've set those up. Okay? Does that make sense for everybody? All right. Do I hear a motion? Again, I'll repeat it again. I, I made the motion in the back. I think James does a great job. Go ahead. Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a question. In the budget material that we were given previously, there was a line item for a program coordinator, which I believe is the major staff cost here at the Nature Center. That budget line items were thirty-nine thousand, which equates, I believe, to around twenty-five dollars an hour. I, my, my question would be, with the interim manager's pay, is why couldn't we get closer to the budgeted line item that was already budgeted? We're working under that budget now, correct?
We are. However, because of the other things that we're working on, I wanna make sure that we don't go over.
Okay.
And so, again, we will look at this next year again, and, or maybe even sooner. But for now, I just wanna make sure that we at least stay within our budget constraints. And I don't know if something else can pop up in the future, and otherwise, I would've left it as, as is, but because, because of so many things, respectfully, I, I think this will be a good start, and then we can, we can head, head towards that direction, sir. But I agree with you. Actually, it probably should be a lot higher when you, when you look at the requirements. But if that were the case, with all due respect, Madam Manager, we would, would be required to have more certificates and things of that nature, which she does not. And that's why you look at the higher level. We're not comparing apples to apples. I'm not requiring her to have certain certifications that a park operations manager may have. She does not. And so maybe in the future, when she does, then we can make that adjustment and, and move on. Does that make sense?
Reluctantly.
I understand. I understand, believe me.
I, I mean, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I've been, I've been coming to the Nature Center here quite often, and never once have I seen Mary not doing something. She, she has gone, I believe, above and beyond, and I, I, I believe a thirteen to eighteen dollars and five dollar an hour increase is a start. I don't think it's where we should end up.
I agree.
Even without the certification, or certificates and the certifications. I think this is something that we need to look to when we start working approving the, the job descriptions. I think we need to take a look at the, the salary we're, so.
Excellent. Excellent. Yes, sir. Commissioner Hutchins?
As we accept this new position in our line item budget, the program coordinator will be off there and replaced budgetarily and tidily in our budget.
Correct.
So that one's gone. Yep.
Yes, we will switch. That's how we're able to afford to do what we're doing right now, and to be able to increase the pay a little for our, our maintenance person. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm doing, switching. There'll be some savings, but not much, because, again, it depends on the hours that our maintenance worker may have. We're, we're saying twenty. I'm not going to explain how the Fair Labor Standards works when it comes to overtime calculation, but I'll be happy to discuss it later. And, but for now, again, to stay within our budgets, as, as Mr. Hutchins said, we need to keep that in mind for now. But we will look at it again, and that, and that will be my recommendation.
And also, under the new administrative end, there will be, when she becomes that person, there'll be an annual review, which is a good time at the annual review to look at our budget and look at her qualifications and her title to upgrade her.
Excellent. Yes, definitely.
Or cost of living raise, stuff like that. Yep.
Yeah, we, we understand. I think this, this commission understands the importance of, of making sure that we attract and retain a good, a good staff, and we wanna continue that. So at the same time, we wanna be able to pay them fairly, and we will. We'll continue to look at this, and it's not something that once we approve, we're gonna forget. I know Commissioner Wright will not let me do that. So we will continue to look at that. Well, none of you here, actually. Everybody here is, is very supportive of that, and, and it's important. So, any other questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion? Or you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay. Who would like to make that motion, please? And that is to approve the recommended adjustments for the interim Parks and Recreation Manager and the newly-named Parks and Recreation Maintenance Supervisor to be implemented starting with the upcoming pay period.
I motion to approve. The proposal is outlined.
Is there a support? I support. Okay. Very good. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please. Carl?
Yes.
Earl? Yes. Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
We appreciate you very much. Thank you.
And I appreciate all the time and how our chairperson put in this, except for this amount of hours.
Thank you. Thank you. I know I bugged her so long. You do what? But thank you, Mary. Thank you so much. Okay, so moving right along, and thank you commissioners also for listening to my long, rambling explanation of what I've done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Mary, can you move the mic closer to you? I'm afraid that the audio is not gonna be picked up.
Oh, that's a good point. Thank you. You know, Mary, when we, when we do that, we may need to get another mic for the public.
I, I actually did, and unfortunately, I think I did not put in something correctly because it's not turning on.
Okay. We'll work on this.
Maybe James needs to work some magic on it.
Yep.
With that position, you are required to have this.
Technology is not my strength, that's for sure.
You really wanna increase it. Okay, so moving on to item number twelve. A new business, one. This is to discuss the proposal from Oakland County Road Commission. I know we've had so many questions on this item. So, Madam Manager, can, can you elaborate a little further?
One of the things that we have heard as, going on twenty years that I've been involved, is that residents do not know this park exists.
Oh, my.
And even the beach park don't exist, but park- But particularly this park, I had reason to have volunteer days 20 years ago and we had young people who would come, and not just young people, but other people, who would come here and they would say, wow, you know, I've lived in this community my whole life and I never knew this park existed. And that is still happening today, which just really surprises me, especially in this day of social media. So over the winter, Commissioner Hutchins and I were talking about it and thought, well, let's at least reach out to Oakland County Road Commission, who is responsible for making street signs, and see how much it would cost to have two signs attached to the existing Falk Road signs. And what we had, and just for the sake of if we can show this, they would say Sorensen Park and they would have a directional arrow pointing into the park. The one thing that I guess I'm a little concerned about is the fact that particularly the direction coming from town out to Dixie Highway, that Falk Road sign is quite a ways before the entrance to the park. The one coming into town is not quite as far. It does not appear to be quite as far. So the only thing is, is that this does come at a significant cost. For the two signs, which are not tremendously large, they are $1,257.59. So that is quite a bit. The advantage that I see is that anybody driving by, whether they're residents or they're not, will be aware of the fact that there is a park right here. I know I had spoken to Commissioner Carl recently and he pointed out to the fact that possibly instead of this expense, that we might instead do a better job of doing our own sign at the entrance that might be better serving for the community. So I'm not sure how you want to do it. We left it at this point that if we want to pursue this, we will reach back out to the road commission. So that's where we're at right now. The other thing is, is that in an email to the road commission, I did ask them whether the street sign, which currently is there, is kind of tucked back off the road and in the trees, if we could move it so that it was on the opposite side of the entrance and we could move it closer up to the road. And they responded by saying that they did not have a problem with that as long as it doesn't impede the site's vision. So I guess I will turn it back over to the commission and see your thoughts, but that's where it stands right now, is that the only thing I have not checked on is with the township, if they have an ordinance that restricts the sign from being up close to the right-of-way of the road, so.
Point of information, that'd be the village, not the town. Because we're in the village on this side of the road. The other side of the road is township.
That's a good point. Okay.
And also, we cannot put it in the right-of-way.
No, I knew that.
And that's where our front post goes out, that's the right-of-way. We can't go beyond that between, into their right-of-way. Our mailbox is in the right-of-way, that's allowed.
Okay.
And the other thing is, that's a lot of money. And if you put it on the Falk Road site, the neighbor's going to end up with a lot of people in his driveway. Because, you know, you sit out here and watch everybody come down this road at 65 miles an hour. They're busy on their cell phone, they go, oh, geez, Sorensen Park, oh, geez, where's that? We got this electronic media now and we're getting online now where $1,200 bucks could spend a lot for other things. And the biggest thing is, what blocks most of our sign is the road commission's two big oak trees that are slowly dying. Because we talked about this over the last years, to move a sign out closer to the road, but their oak trees are in their right-of-way and those are their oak trees.
I like their oak trees.
Well, those oak trees are just about 20 years past their prime or more. If you're going to have those trees tapped to see how much corrodant is in those trees, it's scary. I'm glad it's their trees, not our trees. So that's the biggest thing. Our signage for the last 20 years is the oak trees are in the way. We can't go into the right-of-way. Falk Road's down here, our driveway is over here, so we're always going to end up in Jane's driveway or the neighbor's driveway. People don't pay attention. And you know what's another funny thing is, I've been in this town since 1970 and how many water towers do we have? And where's the boat launch? And where's this and where's that? I didn't know we had that. You'll still find somebody that doesn't know where they're at. Even with this great electronic media, so Google this stuff and they'll give you directions how to get here. And at 65 miles an hour, phew, yeah. And like I say, that sign's too far down the road. It'd be nice if we could have it right across to our driveway, you know, so people would say, oh, there is a park there. Even though we have a great big white sign with red letters that's lit, what more can we do? Look like Miller Road after a while out here, you know? So that's my bone of contention with signage and people. Yep. And everybody doesn't know where the beach is at. Nobody knows that the beach is down Thomas Street. You think that belongs to the village and the boat launch and everything else. And being on village parks, that's what I've told them, is put a sign on East Road, boat launch. Because everybody goes, where's the boat launch? We got a boat launch? Oh, yeah. It's been there for, geez, I don't know how many years. It used to be on the other side of the cemetery, but everybody was backing up their boats into the war memorial, so they moved it. So, yeah, there's always been a boat launch on Bush Lake. So signage is okay, but with the new electronic media, Google it. I Google places to buy things and you Google it and it comes up, wow, she's right by here.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How do you Google it?
Yeah, I'm thinking that too. You have a computer?
You always claim you don't have a computer.
Usually I watch TV and they tell me where it's at. And I get out my Rand McNally roadmap and go all the way to Florida to figure out how to get there. And I never get lost.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
I'd like to add too, that the sign that we have out front with the removable letters, we use it. It's important, like just last week, we had the dates of the disc golf course. I think that's a plus. We also, I think, could use money at kind of rebranding who we are and having a more professional sign at that entrance, which we adapted and it's going to be on the beach. And, you know, we have a new logo, HTP, and I think it needs to be utilized.
Yeah, no, I was looking at that sign. It looks a little old and outdated. I would like to see something a little bit more updated and something that's a little nicer that people can see. I mean, I hope people don't think that just that little space is the park, you know, as they see it and once they drive in, OMG, you know, all of this was here.
Well, I will say that sign that Commissioner Carl was referring to is very difficult to work with. We don't have enough letters. The lines that hold the letters in are not attached correctly to the actual board and so they slide through, they fall off, they, you know. So I would be fully in favor of doing something different. The one thing that I had mentioned to the previous commission was that there is a part of a sign that is out at the Farmstead property on North Holly Road that I've had experience working with and it's very easy to work with. It has magnetic letters and you can see them from a long distance because it's green with white letters. And so you can get like five to six layers of wording on there, so you can have multiple events listed. The only thing is, is that the two sides that are magnetic are attached, but the top and the bottom part would need to be cut off. And then you could build a frame all the way around, you know, like a nice roof or whatever on top of it and, you know, maybe even a stone base. If anybody drives by Seven Lakes, they have a new entrance and they have a new sign there that has like a rock section at the bottom and then they have some kind of a nice, you know, overhang thing. So, you know, just an idea, but that has worked well at the Farmstead when we had it.
So it seems, well, let me ask one more question. So Commissioner Earl, what are your thoughts?
So is the sign, are you saying something similar to the one at the Farmstead?
Well, what happened was, at some point, I think like three or four years ago, the two timbers that were holding it up broke off.
Okay.
And so the sign currently is just like, you know, sideways on that. And so I know that they do not have any interest in using that sign when they develop that property. So I think that we would be able to easily bring that over here if we wanted to use it. And, you know, I think that would be an option that we could explore if anybody wanted to.
On that one, this sign that's out front, the trailer sign we call it, we got that used 20 years ago. It was cheaper, free and it has to be updated. I'm the one that rigged it out of the trailer so we could move it around. And I would say, take the $1,200 and go online and see if somebody's got a good used sign, you know, that we could buy used or look at the other ones or see what the township's going to do with theirs. It was playing a signage job to them. A lot of places have gone out of business or revamped their sign ordinances if those aren't allowed anymore.
We need to see what the, because it's, we're in the township, so we have to see what the township...
No, the village.
This park is in the village still? I thought we were in the township now. Okay. I thought my neighbor's house was the last one before we got out of the village.
Well, we're in.
You're right. Okay.
That's why the village police and fire department come out here and not the state police.
Okay. All right. Okay, so then we need to follow, see what the Holly Village signs...
Yeah, they have certain sign orders that we have to obey.
Okay.
So I think we're all in agreement that we, as much as we would like more signage, the sign that the county has recommended is a little too expensive and it really won't address our needs. So we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and see what we can do. Now, I'm all there for, you know, looking at some, you know, some signs that we can redevelop, but I really would like for us to have a sign of our own, something more modern, something that looks a little better. So, yes.
One little thing about politics, with the sign we have, the trailer sign, it doesn't work well when the wind blows, the numbers go away, is you approach the village and you say, I'd like to repair my existing sign, so we're grandfathered in on that size sign. Otherwise you say, well, we're going to get rid of that sign, what's the new ordinance? Well, no, we're repairing the existing. So we can look at that size of sign, because that's a nice size of sign on the trailer. So there's always a way to approach it. We're repairing the existing.
Except they come out and they say, huh, that doesn't quite look like your old sign.
Well, we're repairing the existing.
You did a good job. We will look, we'll do it the right way.
Making improvement.
Hopefully our new sign doesn't look as bad as our old sign, but we're repairing the existing. It's getting to be unfunctional anymore, so repairing the existing sign we have, that way we don't fall into the new mode.
Okay. Well, hopefully their new mode, hopefully their new mode is better than the old one. I know a lot of studies hate electronic signs. That's something that they stray away from because of accidents and things of that nature. I can understand that. But schools, who can do whatever they want, literally when it comes to signs, they can put up all kinds of electronic signs up there.
Just to touch a little bit on village, because I'm on zoning board of appeals, is the brightness of the sign, and you can't have motion because motion's distracting. So it's the brightness and the content in motion signs. They use standard things. Used to go by Miller Road, it looked like Las Vegas, and they've cleaned up Miller Road a lot. So the village, there's one sign in town that everybody's bitching about because it's so bright, you can see it from a half mile or a mile away and it falls under their ordinance. So everybody else would tell them, well, you can't have that bright of sign. Yeah, but they do. That don't make no matter. They fell into that sign. So the new signs are more eye appealing, they're not as bright, they're not as motion, you know, because a lot of times motions upset drivers. You go to look at something, you turn your wheel and cause accidents. That's one thing, in the village, they've updated their sign ordinance.
All right. So let's take a look at that and come back with some new ideas. So commissioners, I ask that you, you know, do your homework and see what you can find and as long as we can be grandfathered under our old sign, we can continue to have something like that.
I'll approach the village and find out what the ordinances are and if we can repair the existing.
Excellent.
Good.
Do you have a question, sir?
No.
Okay. All right then. We will come back and please continue to place this under old business so that we don't forget it and that we can continue to discuss.
At least we know what county wants to charge.
Yes, we do. Okay.
So can I just confirm? I'll just contact the county and say that we have decided to pursue other options.
Well, we have to make a motion for that?
We have to give them a reply, don't we?
No, not necessarily, because we left it...
I would cordially supply or have you supply them with, at this time, we're investigating the signage. That way we don't give them, yeah.
A yes or no?
Yeah.
Who knows? We may do that in the future. It may still, we may still have to do it because the one thing I'll say is that when it comes to those types of signs, they look and they are part of their signage and they look like their state legal sign and we need that. So eventually, whether we like it or not, this is something that we have to do.
One point, as we looked, in the past, we've looked at electronic signs. You're talking the power to be dropped out there and metered and the new signs are, they started at about $100,000 for an electronic sign like the schools have and stuff like that. Wow. Because we've already looked at all that stuff over the years. Wow, that kind of money. Yeah. So we've been there, done that, we just haven't done that.
Okay. All right. So no electronic signs?
Well, I just, just to add, I feel like the idea of the park, and we've talked about several events in the evening where we're looking at night sky, we're looking at stars, even that amount of an electronic sign, I think...
Could take away?
Could take away from it, you know, if we're trying to promote a darker area, you know. Maybe the signage could be handled without the electronic.
Right. They could just be, the letters could illuminate once some light is flushed on there so that, you know, you could see them at night.
Or under a new sign, if it's opaque, we could put a solar unit in there and lesser charge to light that at night, a solar.
See, you're getting some great ideas. Okay. So we'll come back and look at this and we will come back with our findings and then move forward with that. Okay? Any other questions before I move on? All right. Thank you. Good discussion, commissioners. Thank you. Next, under item 12, new business, item number two, consider approval of Microsoft 365 G1 for email. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Wright.
All right. As most of you know, we've been using a trial version of Microsoft 365 G5, which has provided us with secure email, shared storage and online collaboration tools such as Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, et cetera. The trial ends on April 19th and we need a new, long-term solution that is affordable and sustainable. The G1... The G1 GCC, which stands for Government Community Cloud Plan, is built for government use and meets all compliance and security standards. This proposal ensures that we maintain continuity without interruption, providing professional email addresses for commissioners and staff, access to Microsoft Office programs for meeting coordination and secure file storage via SharePoint and OneDrive. At $10 a month per user, this is a cost-effective and scalable solution that supports our department's goals of improving transparency in digital communication. And I would like to say, the differences between the G5 and G1, the G5 plan would allow us to download the applications directly to the computer, whereas the G1 is online As a budgetary issue, I was looking for the most cost-effective solution. With the new internet service running just fine, I don't see why we can't do that. As I was explaining to Mary and several other of the commissioners, that whatever we work on online through Office 365 is saved to the government cloud server based in the U.S. That's the big difference between the GCC and the regular Office plans, is because it's for a governmental entity. The security is just way higher than the, you know, the regular commercial plan, so.
And the cost for this?
$10 a month per user. I'm recommending 10 accounts, that way we get enough email addresses for the staff and the commissioners, so approximately $1,200 a year.
I know that security has always been an issue for me, and I would, again, under the Freedom of Information Act, everything that's coming to us from, through our personal emails and computers and things of that nature is subject to the Open Meetings Act, and anything that you may have on the computer can be looked at if there's a complaint or a concern or whatever. So I'd like to, again, separate us, and I strongly encourage us to do this. I recommended the same thing for the village when it came to their commissions, and for whatever reason, they just felt it was too costly, and they did not have the staff to monitor. Now, they do have a little bit more staff, so there'd be a lot more people to take a look at, and the cost would be maybe $3,000, so it'd be a little bit more expensive, a little bit more expensive. Okay, do I hear, are there any other questions first? Any other comments, questions? All right. So for this, we're looking for a motion to approve Microsoft 365 G1 for email, and this is $10 per month, and maybe about $1,200 per year. It does include staff as well. So, any other questions or comments? There are none, do I hear a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hutchins. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carl. Roll call, please.
DeSessa.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Hutchins.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Earl, yes. Yay. It's a long needed. We're going to the 20th. Okay. So the next item under new business, item number three, this is to consider approval of purchase of computer with Windows 11 capacity. I can't believe I'm saying this. We're so behind. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Wright.
All right. We currently have two office computers. One of them, a laptop, is functioning well. The second one, however, is outdated, it cannot be upgraded to Windows 11. With Microsoft ending support for Windows 10 in October, this puts us in a risky position from both a security and functionality standpoint. I'm proposing that we approve funds to purchase a new desktop computer that meets Windows 11 requirements, thus we ensure our staff can continue using essential tools such as Windows, or I'm sorry, Microsoft Office 365, managing the upcoming website, and communicating with the public securely and reliably. It's one-time investment that protects our digital infrastructure and allows our operations to run effectively.
I do have some comments, but first I'd like to hear from the commission. Are there any questions or comments?
What's the cost range?
The cost?
I'm recommending we put a range between low end $800 to $1,200. The specifications that I marked down, I'm coming in under that. I just, to make sure that we have a good enough range so that if we do need more specifications, we can, we have that ability, so.
All right, so are there any comments, questions, before I say anything? Anything? Okay. So here are some comments that I'd like to make. This is so important that we do this, it really truly is. I do support this, and it is for this year, and hopefully it'll last us for three to five years. So please, please, please know, commission, that we will be updating this again, our computers, as you know, even with your own personal computers. Even mine, for example, it's already outdated, and I'm going to have to look at, looking at getting a new computer, because what happens after a certain period of time, the software company no longer supports it, and so therefore, if anything goes wrong or any changes, then you can't, the computer won't address it. I mean, I stayed up till, and I'm not lying, I stayed up till 2:30 last night trying to download a simple web root to protect my computer, a firewall, as they call it, and it took a little while, but I got it done finally at 2:30 in the morning, because it's so important to keep this, keep this. So I'd like to perhaps, again, as we look at operations, to take a look at our IT operations. One of the things that I have always done in many of the communities that I worked with is to set up what they call a capital improvements plan for IT, because IT changes constantly. And, not that we can afford to do everything, but at least we can look at some of the things that perhaps we might be able to improve our site. And now that we're out there in the public and people can view our meetings, this is something that we're going to have to stay on top of. At the same time, make it so that it is easy to use and easy to understand, so that our staff can have the tools that they need in order to help us promote our programs and services. Okay? So just know that, all right? And I think if we go, and the motion should read something like, approval of purchase of computer with Windows 11 capacity at a cost not to exceed $1,200. Do you think that'd be sufficient?
I think so.
And again, as we begin developing a policy for purchasing, right now, what I'd recommend is that we get at least three quotes, or three, yes, three quotes, not bids, but quotes. And then, as we develop our purchasing policy, then we'll be able to direct the staff as to when they can go out and actually do a bid, which is a little bit more formal, and we do more public, and we advertise for it in the newspaper and our computer and so forth and so on. But for now, this is just capital equipment, it's minor. All I'm asking is that at this time, we at least get three quotes. And this way, we can evaluate them, and of course, our commissioner can help us evaluate them and take a look at them and see, I know this may cost a little less, but this one is a little better.
Right.
And it's only a couple of hundred bucks, this will last a little bit longer, whatever. We can do some comparison, so low price isn't always the best price, but if we can at least stay within the $1,200, we would appreciate that. Okay? Yes, sir.
One question with the environment that we're doing financially on the outside with the world, do you think we should raise that to $1,300 or $1,400, or you see price increase coming up?
Well, that's a good point.
What's the market like out there right now?
No, I understand what you're saying.
Because in a month, we're going to make a, you know, do this.
I think $1,200 is more than adequate. Like I said, everything I've been seeing is coming well under.
Okay.
So I don't expect that to change drastically in the next month or two.
If it does, please, please let us know.
Yeah.
Okay? Obviously? And we'll come back and evaluate. Okay. All right. Any questions?
No.
Comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the purchase of computer with Windows 11 capacity at a cost not to exceed $1,200?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hutchins. Is there a support?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carl. All in favor of, or I should say, please do a roll call. Madam Secretary, I apologize.
Wright.
Yes.
DeSessa.
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Earl? Yes. Motion passes. Yes. Okay, now, last time, I forgot all about public comment, and I apologize, that was not unintentionally. So at this time, I would like to invite the public that we have out here to make any comments that they would like to make. Again, I'd like to keep it to four minutes, please. But if there's anyone out there in the public that would like to make a comment, please come forward. Okay? Sure?
Thank you for recognizing Mary. I know she's doing an excellent job here, and I would like to see her pay go up a little bit, because I worked with a bookkeeper, and I know the money's in the budget, so you can do it, Mary, but I'm glad to see it go up from 13 to 18, for sure. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the commissioners for voting yes for having us here in the B's.
Excellent. Yes. Yay. Excellent, excellent. Okay, any other comments from the public? There are none. I'm closing the public comment session. With that, I would like to adjourn this meeting, and it's adjourned at 7:42 PM.